Good evening and welcome to the Autumn Subcommittee. Today is Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Members are present, my bias is Chair, Councilor Rodriguez and Councilor de la Cruz. Good evening all and thank you all for being here. Councilor, can I get a motion to approve the meeting of the Tuesday, September tenth?
To move second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. First document is Document Three Ten Nineteen. It's a handicap parking twenty Swan Street. It has been put on the agenda by Rosa Inez Gome. Can I get a motion to send it to Officers Callan for study review?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to table Document Three Ten dash nineteen?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document Three Eleven is a pain broker license application, Brother Jerry Francisco Marcelino. He's present today? I know this is a renewal. Is Francisco present today? So, Councilor, I know this is a renewal, just give a few minutes to... Councilor, all the papers are in order. We have all the sign off. Can I get a motion?
Motion to send it to full council.
To move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Oh, but he has twelve. Document Two Three Twelve is a all-go license application also from, put on the agenda by Francisco Marcelino.
To move? I mean, a motion to send it to full council without further recommendation?
Uh, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document Three Fourteen dash nineteen is a winter parking ordinance Ferguson Street, request to be add. It has been put on the agenda by Councilor La Planz. Good evening, Councilor, and thank you for being here with us today.
Madam Chair, and thank you for members of the committee. I just ask, of course, this be sent up to the Police Department for their recommendation. And I will also ask, since there's several items after this vote, if you don't mind, there's two or three different items that I'd like to be able to take, if you don't mind, out of order, once this is completed. And I give you those numbers.
Can I have the document numbers?
Sure. Document Three O Eight Nineteen, Two Seventy Nineteen, and One Eighty Three Nineteen.
One eighty?
Eighty-three.
So, Three O Eight is a new business. Two Seventy Nine? Is Two Seventy Nine, is our new items or... Because I don't see the Two Seventy Nine.
No, Two Seventy Nineteen.
Oh, Two Seventy Eight.
No, Two Seventy. Two Seven Zero.
Oh, Two Seventy. Okay.
Some of these, I'll just be asking for an update.
I don't have Two Seventy.
Two Seventy Nineteen was new business on August thirteenth.
Page two, where?
Seventy Nineteen.
August thirteenth?
Okay.
And Document One Eighty Three Nineteen is on June fourth, on page three.
One Eighty Three, okay. Can I get a motion to take Document Two Seventy? Dash nineteen, One Eighty Eight? Dash nineteen, out of table? Out of table and out of order?
To move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, it's just to have it. So, yeah, continue with that.
So, the first one is Three Fourteen Nineteen. I hope that you will send that to the Police Department for their review. On Document Number Three O Eight Nineteen, which is Merrimack Street, four temporary resident parking spots, that was put before this committee on, for new business on September seventeenth. I don't know what the status is on that, so I'm asking for the status, number one, and number two. There's a resident of mine who would love an opportunity to be able to advocate for that, and I would hope that the committee would be able to listen to his testimony, number one. And then I would also request that that document item, as soon as you hear the testimony, in consultation with the DPW Director, there should be an amendment to that to allow for a certain number of feet's width along the south side. But if it's okay with the committee members, I'd like to have an opportunity for a constituent of mine be able to advocate for that for Three O Eight Nineteen.
Okay.
If there's no objection.
Good evening, Council. Hi, my name's Ron LaQuinn, and I'm a resident at Two Seventy Seven, Two Seventy Nine Merrimack Street. I am the only house on that street that has no parking. Everybody else has parking lots, driveways. I enforce the park on this street. Due to the ongoing construction going on down itself, with the parking garage being built, we have lost several parking spots for me and my residents and some of my tenants. I do have some pictures here, if you'd like to look at them. The trucking question is my truck, where I have to parallel park or double park on a daily basis and wait for an available spot to park my car. I have to walk my children two blocks, three blocks down in order to get to the house, because we have absolutely no parking whatsoever over there. We are asking that we can get some temporary parking spots placed on the north side of Merrimack Street to help us ease with our situation.
So, what you say that you are the only house that has no driveway?
Correct.
And no space to park?
Correct. And a few years ago, Sel bought a lot next to me, and when he bought that lot, that forced my neighbor to have to build a driveway in her property.
Right.
And when that driveway was built, I lost three parking spots. So, I got a six-family home with three parking spots, which don't work out when a normal household has two cars available to them.
Okay, Councilor, you have any question? You do? Councilor Rodriguez?
Uh, good evening, sir. So, you live on the property, on the six-family house?
Yes.
And you rent the other five units?
I, I'm not the property owner, but I'm the guy that maintains the property for the owner, but I also live there. It's a two-family home in the front and a three-family home in the back.
And you have no, and there is the only one house around that doesn't have any parking space?
Correct. Majority, a majority of it is businesses that have, like, parking for their customers, and the few other residents that are there all have driveways.
And is the parking lot that you were talking, I mean, the lot that you were talking about, is that what part of this property before?
It was part of my neighbor's property before, and then that was sold to Sel so he can accommodate for some of his clients for parking. And then, and like I said, in return, that forced them to have to put a driveway in so they can park their cars, and that took up valuable spots from us.
So, the lot was never part of the property that you live in, right?
Correct.
Any other question, Councilor? Yes. I do have one for Councilor La Planz. So, the Three O Eight Merrimack Street, four temporary resident parking space, that is to beneficial that house?
It'll, it'll provide relief to the residents of that, of that house, and if there's any other residents in that small strip area. So, there's two things. One is for that four on the, on the, on the north side, and I will, I will just caution that we just need, they just need this until that parking garage is fixed.
Fixed, okay.
And constructed, I'm sorry, constructed. Once it's constructed, then we can sunset that provision and return it to its original use. But right now, until, until March of next year, there's going to be a parking crunch there. So, this is a very short-term ordinance that allows these residents some relief while the parking craziness continues for the next six months or so. In addition to that, Council Chairwoman, I'd also would ask that, that an amendment be made onto this on the, on the, on the south side of the street, directly in front of this house, and the Director of DPW is here to advocate for this as well. I would ask, do you mind, if I could have Mr. Payne to speak on this?
Good evening, Councilors. So, the, the second request here is to amend Section ten point four zero point oh six zero of the Code of Ordinances.
That's, that's another, that's another item. So, we have like three, four, five items right now.
So, we are in Three O Eight?
It's related, it's related to Three O Eight.
I'm asking that that, that document, whatever number, Three O Eight Nineteen be amended to include this.
That's, that's amendment on that one?
Merrimack Street issue.
It's on Merrimack.
Okay, are we in Three O Eight Nineteen Merrimack, four, four temporary resident parking spaces?
Yes, it's the same item.
So, okay, and then the, the amendment is to, to one specifically?
Expand, so expand the per, the resident parking by X number of feet.
So, it's, it's not going to be four anymore, it's going to be more than four?
So, the four that Councilor Plan spoke of are the temporary spots on the north side?
That's right.
So, those will have a sunset clause there. The second part of the request is a permanent change.
I mean, in front of the house. It's not in front of the house, my house to the side of the house.
To the side, the other side.
So, what's going to be a permanent change now? That's not temporary?
No, the second portion. So, the first portion is the four temporary spots on the north side of Merrimack Street. The second portion of the request is a permanent change to this section of the ordinance. I can cite it, it's ten point four zero point zero six zero. It says it relates to the resident sticker program within the city, and this would be a change to an item taken up in two thousand and fifteen, which allowed for resident sticker parking, beginning at Dolan Court, to appoint one hundred twenty-five feet westerly of Dolan Court. The amendment would be to change the one hundred twenty-five feet to one hundred fifty-five feet.
And thirty feet going to make a difference or?
It will allow two additional parking spots. So, these will be permanent.
Do you have the, do you have that ordinance with, with, uh, with you? The ten forty six oh six six?
The ordinance number?
Yeah.
Uh, ten point four zero?
I mean, do you have it with you?
Uh, I do not have the, the section with me.
It is tough for you, for people to remind, they have a...
You want to, you want to take some time and look at it?
I mean, if they have it, of course.
No, but can you go in the book?
The section of the ordinance, Councilor, lists all of the streets that are subject to the resident sticker parking program, and then the, the extents of those road segments that have been designated.
So, essentially, on that, that ordinance, it established resident parking on, on the south side of the parking, of the, of the, of Merrimack Street?
Correct.
And, and it extend to one hundred twenty-five feet? That allow about ten parking spot, right?
Right now, it allows for three parking spots. Because of the configuration, the reconfiguration of those, of those roads, of the road there, as part of the ongoing construction project on Merrimack Street, it currently only allows for three full parking spots in about a ten-foot section. So, the, the...
And who take advantage of those parking spot right now? Any resident of Merrimack Street or, or specific people?
It's, it's resident parking, so they would need a residence parking sticker for Merrimack Street.
But I do have a question. What is going to happen with the business that is on Merrimack Street? So, if it's going to be only resident, what about for the businesses? So, what are we leaving them out?
Uh, so, we have accounted for that.
We have what?
We've, we've accounted for that, so there's a, there's a section of road that we're talking about right now.
So, with the timeframe, like, it's going to be from time to...
Um, we, we have not, we have not included a timeframe, but there are four spots available with this reconfiguration. Two of those spots would be for residents, two of them would be for the businesses in the area. Right now, we know of one restaurant where the parking spots would essentially be directly in front of the restaurant.
Because I think we're just going to go back and forth with the same item. For the temporary one, Councilor La Planz, are we looking for any specific time? For the temporary one, like, six P M. to six A M.? So, how, how does that's going to work?
So, we just need the, um, temporary, the one across the, the temporary one. You just need that overnight, you don't need that during the day. So, so the time?
Pretty much overnight, yeah.
Overnight, so what time? Seven o'clock to six o'clock, something like that, seven to seven?
I mean, it's only make a sense, that if they're not going, if they're going to be out and about during the day, so why we have to limit it, those business?
That's right.
Not to be able to park up there, our customers?
So, seven, seven to seven?
No, that's exactly what we are going to fix before that happen. We're not doing anything yet.
Seven to seven would be, uh, we, we can work on that, of course, but I think seven to seven is a good, a good timeframe. That makes sense, somebody gets to come after work, relatively speaking, get a place to park, and then in the morning, they're going to leave to go wherever they're going to work in the morning, seven to seven. That would work.
Yes.
Seven to seven, sounds good.
That's for the temporary, or that's for the permanent?
Um...
For the temporary.
For all your, for the permanent one? The permits, as Mr. Payne was saying, is typically the permanent ones are twenty-four sevens all the time. The temporary ones, we can certainly work around. Again, whatever hours, I, I, you can tell that we're kind of working through, we just want to make sure people can park there at night. So, we, seven to seven, eight to eight, I think we can work with almost any time.
Six to six?
Six to six? Yep, that works. For the temporary, that works.
For the temporary? Six to six, so that way, because I know the...
Six to six, at night, six in the morning.
Six to six, six P M. to six A M.
So, only resident parking, according to your proposal, Madam Chair, is any time after six P M. to six in the morning? That twelve-hour timing, that's limited for that.
To the resident parking.
Of course, that's, that, that works.
And that's only going to be temporary? So, any other question?
So, on the, on the permanent one, changing the ordinance from one twenty-five to one fifty-five, right, you say? So, how long it's only for? What, what's the configuration there that allow only for a couple of spot, two spots?
Essentially, what you have is you have an area that allows for, for three spots, and you have a series of driveways to the budding properties, or the ones that Mr. LaQuinn mentioned. All of the residential properties have their own driveways, with the expec, with the exception of his property. Uh, so, you have all those driveways, then you have a, a little spot where you can fit four cars right now. All four of them right now are non-residential. The idea would be that we would create two residential parking spots, and then two, which would be allocated to the business. Uh, one point that I should bring up too is that the business that, that, that serve by the two spots are part of the property that Mr. LaQuinn manages.
Yeah, but I mean, if you say residential, they're not going to be, any business won't be able to get an, a, a sticker, because they don't live there.
Correct. For, for two of those spots, they'll be strictly non-residential, so anyone can park there to go to the business. And I, I'll note, the business will take out business.
That's included on the thirty, on the thirty extra feet that you, that you adding?
It is not, no. So, we were not, we're not converting those business parking spots to residential. They will remain business.
So, this is just going to be a residential, and you're going to be able to add with those thirty feet, with those thirty feet, extra two, uh, two extra parking spot?
Correct, because we already, we already have ten feet that is designated in the original one twenty-five.
Still can see, how come one twenty, one hundred twenty-five feet only can fit two car, two people?
Because the majority of that hundred and twenty-five feet is driveway space. Okay, so, what you have is you have about, you have sixty feet, uh, and you have sixty feet right now that are parking spots. You have fifty-five, uh, sorry, fifty-five feet, which is driveway, and then ten feet after the driveway as part of the one twenty-five.
So, and then there is one spot that is four parking spaces, and two are going to stay as a commercial, or as a, anybody can park.
Correct.
And two are going to be residential.
Correct.
How those business feel about it, because I mean...
Yeah, there'd be a public hearing, uh, number one. Number two is, again, that business is part of the, the property that's managed by Mr. LaQuinn, so, uh, they'll, they'll be well aware of the, of the changes there. Uh, in fact, one of the, you know, one of the issues that we've, what we've heard from business owners in the area is that the lack of signage, the clear signage. So, this is actually going to help that, because we'll have the residents sticking to just their area, uh, and not the, and not the business, and vice versa. The business patrons will stick to just the, the business parking.
How many, how many parking spot you have in total in that area available? To, that are available to either, uh, uh, parking permit or anybody can park around that specific side?
Um, I, I, I don't know the exact number. Um, I would say there's several dozen, because again, you have the entire north side of the street, which is non-restricted parking. Uh, so, any patrons of any of the local businesses can park on the north side, uh, where there are a few dozen parking spots right now. The two in question, again, I'll just reiterate, the two in question are right in front of a takeout business. So, I believe right now they're limited to twenty minutes, uh, by ordinance, uh, those two spots, and we're not proposing to touch those two spots.
Uh, Councilor de la Cruz?
Thank you. What is the difference between the temporary and the permanent ones?
The, the temporary are going to be on the north side of the street to alleviate some of the congestion as a result of the ongoing construction at the, uh, LePole Properties, at the Riverwalk Properties. Uh, so, they will, they'll be temporary in nature, they'll go away as soon as the construction is done. Uh, they'll revert back to being wide open parking spots.
Councilor, how many houses are in that block?
How many houses are, which lot?
And the, the one that we are talking, that, um... Is, is, is a block from Union to...
Well, there's Dolan Street, there's, there's the parking garage.
The other side that is residential, no, the, the other side that is all the buildings.
Right, so, there's a mill on one side.
Yeah, mill on one side, no, the other...
On the other side, it starts off from South Union Street with, with McGovern Parking Garage.
Right.
And then you pass that over, and then you start talking with like Eli's, right? And the, the, you have the, the, um, the strip mall, and then Eli's, and then Mr. LaQuinn's property is right after Eli's, and then there's, um, Emmerick on the Tavern. Emmerick on the Tavern and Jim's Cabobes.
And Jim, Jim Cabobes, which is part of my property that I maintain, which is all, it's all, all, all together in the package. We always save spots for Jim, because he's one of my tenants. So, we've always worked out our parking issues between him and I for that, for that area. Um, then there's one house next to me, a driveway, a second driveway, and a third house, and a big parking lot, which is one of Sel's properties. Now, the Merrimack on the Tavern, during the evening hours, her clientele can park, and Sel's parking lot, because Sel actually owns that building, and that was an agreement that we already came up with for her clientele a while back, so that they can have proper parking too. So, while, I mean, even though we got businesses and residents, we're all trying to work together down here so that we can all have proper parking.
Okay. Any other question? So, we're just going to start with Document Three Fourteen. Can I get a motion to... Three Fourteen, to send this? You want to make the motion? To send it to Officers Callan?
Motion to send it to Officers Callan?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to table Document Three Fourteen dash nineteen?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document Three O Eight. Motion to send it to Officers Callan for study review?
To move?
Madam Chair, may also include, if you don't mind, also that amendment, that potential amendment as well?
With the amendment of the...
Feet, from one twenty-five to one fifty-five?
One twenty-five.
One fifty-five.
Change to admin, to what meant the ordinance?
On the, on the south side of Merrimack?
The south side. Maria, you got all that? Uh, motion to send it, Document Three O Eight dash nineteen to Officers Callan?
To move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table Document Three O Eight dash nineteen?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Document Two Seventy, can I get a motion to send it to Officers Callan for study review?
Madam Chair, it's already been sent to the officer, I'm just looking for an update.
What do you mean? So, what do you need on Two Seventy?
I'm looking for an update on Two Seventy Nineteen. I don't, I don't think that's been returned back, I'm just looking for an update.
Oh, okay, so, can I get a motion to send corresponded to Officers Callan looking for update on Document Two Seventy?
Aye, do you want to move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to, to table Document Two Seventy?
To move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And last but not least, One Eighty Three, Stop Sign Intercession Accord in Emerald and Vandergriff, Councilor La Planz. So, you want also study on that one?
No, Madam Chair, in this particular one, they, we've already received a, a recommendation from Officer Scanlon on request, and this committee referred this to the, to the full council. The, um, the, frankly, the, um, in all candor, the, uh, the officer did not approve or did not recommend that this be put forward, but I would like to have this still sent up to the full council, uh, so that we could have a full vote on that.
We can send it with no recommendation, since we're going, okay. Can I get a motion to send Document Y Eighty Three with no recommendation?
Motion to send it to full council?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm done, appreciate your patience.
Thank you, thank you for being here. We was just going to continue. Document Three Fifteen dash nineteen, Sunset Avenue Parking on one side of the street. Can I get a motion to send Document Three Fifteen dash nineteen to Officers Callan? And, and the DPW?
To move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table Document Three Fifteen dash nineteen?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document Three Sixteen, to send it to Officers Callan, motion?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table Document Three Sixteen?
To move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document Three Seventeen dash nineteen, Christmas Street Lighting on eleven thirty, twelve thirty-first, and one twelve, Campanon Common, Jose Davila. Good evening, name and address for the record?
My name is Jose Davila, President of Hispanic Week, thirty-five Campanon Street, apartment two thirty, Lawrence, Massachusetts.
Okay. So, what are we looking?
Um... Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we're here to have permission to have, uh, for the first time in Lawrence, in the Campanon Common, the Christmas tree lighting, it's, um, Christmas lighting at the park. Um, we have, um, all the papers, and we are working at this event in collaboration with the City of Lawrence, uh, with the Mayor Office. And I have my, uh, event coordinator, Officer Manis Pana. Vanessa Spenders, that she's going to explain a little bit more that, that event, all right?
Thank you.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Vanessa Spenders, I'm the event coordinator for the Hispanic Week. Um, for the first time after forty-two years, the Hispanic Week, we are looking to be able to celebrate the first Christmas lighting at the park. We really believe and are very, very committed to this project, because, um, it's an opportunity for the community to be together, and it's going to be an event that is not going, is not only for one day, it's going to be for a long period of time. So, what are we trying to do is, beginning with the parade that is going to be on November thirtieth, bring all the community to the park every day. Like, uh, we want to have every night, a different group, the church, organizations, to have... Like, uh, we want to have every night, a different group, the church, organizations, to have, um, a special night for the kids, for the community in the park. So it's gonna be a very nice experience for our community, and it's a, a moment that everybody can meet together, and I think it's for the first time, we never had a, the opportunity to have, like, a place that everybody can go and take pictures, the whole family activities with the, for the kids. Uh, we, we planning to have, uh, one day they're gonna be playing with the kids, another we're gonna be having, like, giving hot chocolate, um, another day the schools can go and bring the kids to sing. Um, so it's a lot of different projects, and we are really, really have, uh, this passion to celebrate this, and I don't know what else to say.
Um, so eleven thirty, twelve thirty first, and one twelve, you're looking to do it for three days?
No, for the whole month. We, we are requesting the twenty-second because we are going to decorate the park.
So it's from eleven thirty through one twelve?
No, the, we are requesting from the twenty-second because we are gonna be working at the park, we're gonna be decorating the trees around the stage area. Uh, we wish that we can decorate the whole park, but we'll see what the community think about. But, um, so we're gonna need a couple of days to do the work, to be decorating the, the trees, but the first activity that we're gonna be doing there is the thirtieth, which is gonna begin with the parade. We're gonna have some presentations at the stage, and around five, six, it's gonna be the parade, and Santa Claus is coming, so we're gonna have the whole night over there. So after that, every night, we're planning to have somebody in the community, like the schools, like the church, once again, um, doing something in the park. So the last day, it's going to be the twelfth, because, um, for us, for the Hispanic, you know, we celebrate the Octavitas, so it's a couple of days after the Twinkings Day. So we're planning to have the opportunity to celebrate all the activities that we do through the whole month of December.
Uh, so the day that you are requesting, is the day that you check with our park division director to make sure that those days are going to be okay? Nelson Ortiz?
Yes.
You did?
We spoke with Nelson Ortiz. We have a, 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 a group that the mayor, um, um, make with Wendy Lusson, and it's a good, um, group working with this event. So they know everything that today, we have a, a meeting with, um, this guy, um, the electrician guy, to have, you know, all the, the point, to have, uh, electricity. To the, all, you know, to the, all the, the...
For the, the area.
All area, yeah.
And, uh, and it's gonna be from what time to what time?
Well, so, um, we're gonna start that, uh, uh, May thirty, um, November thirty, with the ceremony in the, in the Campanon Common. And that's, um, going to extend from that day to June twelfth. It's like, uh, New York Rockefeller Center, something like that, you know, that, uh, all the family can go to the park and enjoy the night and take a picture, united the, the kids, working with the youth, uh, you know.
I believe some activities are gonna be during the day, like on the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, we can have activities around noon, you know, but, um, maybe in another moments are gonna be during the night, like during the weekdays, after kids are out of school or, you know, people are out of work, so it's gonna be like six to eight. So we don't have, uh, a specific days that probably is gonna be a couple of days that we're gonna have nothing because we, the community didn't book for that day in specific. But, um, I'm sure that, uh, the activities are not gonna be extended to very late in the night, that is for sure.
I think that we're going to, um, every, every, every day, we're gonna start, uh, the light up, maybe at five, maybe at five, um, ending at one o'clock in the morning.
Just the lighting, not the activities.
No, no, the, yeah. So, um, I don't think, um, that we, we don't going to have a everyday activity in the park. We don't think, right? But we're planning to have something in the, in the park every day.
The reason that I ask that is because I have your application in front of us, and what I see is, um, on November thirty through December thirty first.
Because they break the year, you know, December thirty first is the end of the year, and then begin, that's, because I have it here too. So then begin January first through January twelfth. So they divided because the year, that's the end of the year.
Yes, and, um, so and the, the time that I have for that event on the November thirty is gonna be twelve noon.
Well, um, we're gonna have the parade for lighting, you know, like at twelve o'clock in, in the morning, um, it's not possible to see the lights. So we're gonna be in the park doing games and doing activities, but the lighting per se is going to be around five, six.
I don't wanna sound complicated, I just want you to be clear that, um, all the days that you requested, which I'm seeing here, November thirty through December, um, thirty first, so we have noon, but we don't have end of time. And, um, if you check with Nelson and he say okay, I don't think, and no one's used actually the park during the winter or when it's cold, I, I think you guys is going to be okay, but I just want to make sure. The time that I have here is five PM to ten PM, so you don't need extra time to, to wrap it up and, 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 and that start up?
Previous time to set up, so if we're gonna do something, we need to set up first to be able to have the activity. The activity begins at, at five o'clock, so we're gonna need, like, be there like three to be able to set up.
So that is why I was asking all those questions, because if you need time to set up and, and, and chop down or, or, or close down, so you have five to ten, but if you say I need three o'clock, you have to make sure that no one else has an event at three o'clock, and then it's gonna interfere with your event. That is why, if you need time, we have no problem to give you more time, but you need to check just to make sure that no one else is gonna be using the park when you are setting things up.
Okay, that's why I talked with, um, Nelson, and he told me that we have to, um,
We need to request the twenty-second?
Yeah.
So I, I believe that what she's, I, yo creo que lo que ella está diciendo es que si nosotros vamos a tener actividad durante todos esos días, otra organización no puede tener. But I...
The day, we can change the day, you have to go back and check with him just to make sure that it's gonna be...
But we are opening the, the dates, um, to the public, so if they want to do events while we are there, um, we are okay with that, that we are looking for people to come to the park and do activities during those times.
Okay, so are you planning to bring any vehicle inside of the park?
I don't think so.
No?
Just, just the parade, the, the Santa.
The Santa Claus car.
And it's gonna be in the, okay.
The trineo, yeah.
And how about music?
That day, we're gonna have in the ceremony, that day of November thirty, we're gonna have, um, music.
Okay.
And the other days, I don't know.
Well, if, if we are inviting the, the schools to perform, they're gonna need music. If the church are gonna do activities, they're gonna need music, so.
This is, sounds great. I'm excited. This is, from what I'm seeing, this is gonna be the first time that we're gonna be, something like this. Uh, if you going to have a speaker, it needs to be toward to your group, not to the public, just, you know, to make sure that no one comes and complains, like it's a lot of noise in the park and all that, because we had those complaint in, in the, in the past. Nothing to do with this. I think this is great. Um, I think we need that, but it's just to make sure for you to be safe if you wanna continue in the future, that you wanna continue just to be, you know, in the safe size. Because, um, every time we, we approve any permits to use the park, we getting a numbers of complaints.
If some organization want to use on those days, some, um, sound. It's from five to ten, five to ten, right? Not to latter.
No.
I don't think that we don't going to, to have in those d- uh, days, uh, music like crazy, you know, no, I don't think.
I, I don't think at the time it really matter. I think what we need to be conscious is that if we aren't going to be use speaker, it needs to be toward to the group.
Of course.
Okay, any, any, any group have to, um, they have to have a, a, a permit from, from the, from the police department?
No.
No, 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 no.
Talking about something different.
Okay.
No, 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 no. This is, this is not something, uh, Cons...
Sound on the stage.
Yeah.
So if you're using music through you manager, have to be through towards your group, that's it.
Okay.
And if you invite people to use music, although they need music, it in, the music need to be towards you, the group that is there.
All right, sure.
So it is, it's just for you to be safe, if you wanna apply for next year, so no one can come to us and say no, uh, because we have, we have to keep all the complaints, you know, the people call the police, and then when you go to request the permit from the police department, they're gonna say no because you didn't comply.
Yeah, yeah.
That's basically. Any other question? Uh, any other councilor has any question? No question?
Motion to send to the, uh, full council, with the recommendation?
Second.
Motion has been made properly second. All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. You do need to come back to our next city council meeting, which is next Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Document three eighteen dash nineteen, application of new single...
Make it as a group.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to take document three eighteen, three nineteen, three twenty, three twenty-one, three twenty-two, three twenty-three, three twenty-four, and three twenty-five as a block?
Some move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, all the documents is basically the same, uh, different locations. Am I correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, um, I'm just gonna leave the floor to you, and you can explain. I know that we have something, uh, that we are working on, right, Councilor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, uh, councilors, good evening. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I am an attorney of Brown Rudnick. I'm outside counsel to AT&amp;T. With me is Nouris Camargo from AT&amp;T External Affairs. Uh, we were before the council about a year and a half ago, uh, in May, uh, where we, uh, presented applications for what we call these small cell installations. These are to provide wireless coverage and capacity for AT&amp;T's network. Uh, the council was gracious enough to approve six of those. At that time, I suggested that there would be more coming. This is the new wave of wireless to use, uh, antennas mounted to utility poles, uh, closer to the street and closer to the customers. Uh, so we have eight more this evening. I would note that the document number three two zero nineteen, uh, we discussed, uh, this installation with the planning department today. Uh, they believe the site is not located in a public way. You may be in receipt of the memo from the planning department. I would suggest that that one be left on the table. We have to do some more research to see whether we're actually in the public right away. For that particular one. The other seven, we're prepared to proceed. Uh, they are all similar applications. Uh, four of them are attaching a two-foot antenna on the top of an existing utility pole. There's an equipment cabinet box that attaches to the side of the pole. Uh, it's about three feet long, about eighteen inches wide, and twelve inches deep. Extended electrical power. Uh, we've provided the emissions reports to demonstrate compliance, uh, with the FCC standards. On three of the locations, the utility is requiring that we replace the pole, so the pole will actually be replaced. I know the city is, uh, been insistent that there not be double poles, and we understand that, we have no issue with taking out the pole, uh, once they're replaced. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The installations are very similar. Uh, because we've installed some, I did, uh, present a photograph of what a typical installation looks like. If you look at the third page of our application, you'll see the antenna at the top and the equipment box, uh, on the side of the pole. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here. Once again, that's why your face looks familiar. Say, I was trying to make the connection, now I know.
Thank you.
For the record, I need to read the address, just because I took it as a block, and then I do have a question about near and on, so what is the difference on that? Uh, the first item is five eighty-nine Hable Street, the second is two seventy-three Water Street, the third one is seventeen Boyd Street, the fourth is two thirty-two Carlin Street. The five is Lawrence and Lexington Street, doesn't have any near to Lawrence and Lexington Street. The s- the six is two Newbury Street, and the last one is four fourteen Howard Street. So what is that near to that address, and you have some is near on, and you don't have like a specific numbers?
Yeah. Yeah, the difficulty is that the street poles don't have a street address, so we, we pick a property that's nearby to be very specific about the pole we've identified. We did provide the pole numbers, which are just to the left of those addresses. But if, you know, if a pole is located between two houses, it might, one house or one location might be twenty-three Main Street and the other one twenty-five, we pick the closest one and we use that as the identifying address. I think that's what you would use for your butter notice.
I know Councilor Rodriguez has a lot of input and has a lot to say, so Councilor Rodriguez.
Yes, how you doing, guys?
I do well, thank you.
Well, essentially, uh, we have an ordinance that we're working on for small cells, uh, for the installation, and, uh, and it went for publication last, I believe, last Friday. Uh, we actually sent it over to publication, and it's gonna be public hearing at the beginning of our next meeting, I believe. Uh, but we have this application, this, um, application in front of us. I just wanna make sure that, um, these applications that we are discussing tonight are gonna be under the, the new ordinance once it goes through. And, uh, we wanna make sure and clear that everybody's on the same page in terms of fees, in terms of, uh, regulations, uh, we are adopting, uh, insofar, because I mean, uh, we understand the ordinance is not in place as, as of right now, uh, because we have it in publication. So I just wanna put that up there. I m- I mean, I hope that you guys have the chance to read that, that the ordinance is very common, uh, throughout the state, and, uh, and have, um, very little restrictions in terms of locations, which was one of the concern based on the previous meeting we pre- we have. Uh, and I just wanna make sure that we, we're all aware of, of what is happening with the small cells, current ordinance in the city of Lawrence. Uh, we agree about that?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Are we good with that?
Yeah, we understand there's an ordinance forthcoming. I, I think it's something that we've seen, uh, other towns have adopted something, uh, very similar. I think the town of And- uh, town of Andover is, uh, has a similar ordinance that, and we've applied to, for their approvals.
Yeah, and essentially, um, that ordinance has been, uh, in publication, and, uh, and if we move forward with these applications, um, I believe the process is that we're gonna have to wear a public hearing. So it's gonna be after, after we approve the, uh, the ordinance anyway. We just wanna make you aware that, like, as we discussed previously, that we are in the process of adapting either a, an ordinance with the possibility of just having a, a policy change. Uh, as change, uh, arrive about these small cells and the new regulations coming up. So, uh, and w- we wanna make sure that we, we talk about that here at the, at the committee meeting. All right? Thanks so much.
So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna table the document just to...
We can send it over. I mean, it's been published, the ordinance.
It is? Okay, so we're gonna be sending with, um, favor recommendation pending?
Pending the current, on the, that we're gonna be approving.
Okay, so can I get a mo- So can I get a motion?
Motion to send.
Motion to send it to the full council, uh, with a recommendation pending the, um, ordinance that we we have in place in publication for approval.
Motion has been made properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you for being here one more time.
Thank you.
Okay?
Happy to be here. Thank you.
So can councillor, can I get a motion to take document one twenty-one dash eighteen at a table and out of order? Four page. Can I get a motion to take it at a table and out of order?
Second. Motion to, motion to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document one twenty-one dash nineteen is recycling program ordinance and has been put on agenda by councillor Payano.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I think we, I I it was last before you about two or three months ago with, uh, former director, uh, Hakas, and I was given some homework to do.
Yeah.
Um, you know, one of the homework was around, uh, you know, there was a question around, um, uh, the fees or fines that would be put in place, uh, if, uh, fines were to be given. And I have the recycling coordinator here that can speak further to that, but what I would like to do before she comes up is just amend my, um, a- amend the ordinance with the language, uh, that's before you now, 'cause that's what she's gonna be, um, speaking on. So I don't know if that can be done as a fr- a friendly amendment or what what the process would be to do that.
So, let me see if I understand. This is only for recycling?
Councillor.
So, so, so this is, so what is before you right now is to amend the proposal, uh, to amend one twenty-one eighteen.
And what is gonna be the amendment?
So, uh, the amendment, um, hopefully you have something near you, but it says, uh, it's adding to, uh, section eight point zero nine, point zero forty, uh, another section F. Um, the Department of Public Works will create a recycling notice to be signed by the tenant and attached to the lease. And eight point zero nine, one twenty point C, point nine, the Department of Public Works will create a guideline around enforcement that will ensure that enforcement agents take into account the information and education tenants and landlords have received.
The Department of Public Works will create a guideline around enforcement that will ensure that enforcement agents take into account the information and education tenants and landlord have received.
Yes. So, uh, when when we last spoke, and I and I think, um, uh, the recycling coordinator will can go more, a little bit more into details, I think one of the concerns were uh twofold. Uh, one, what if individuals don't have information? They don't know about these changes that are being done. Um, and, um, you know, and then the second is, what if the tenant informed the the, not the tenant, the landlord informed the tenants of all this and the tenant just doesn't want to do the program? After speaking with the the director and the recycling coordinator, what they have stated is that they're not necessarily, if a if a tenant is not interested, if the landlord is doing their best to try to get their tenant to recycle, right? They're 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 giving the, uh, the bins that were provided by the city and the tenant is not interested in recycling, uh, that they're not necessarily looking to fine the landlord. And I think the recycling coordinator can go a little bit more into details, how other cities, um, have used that. You know, one of the things that was mentioned is that, uh, in the city of Haver, uh, they only gave, there's been tremendous gains and they only gave out five fines, uh, throughout, uh, throughout that that program. Um, so I think that these two things go into what the committee was looking for, um, around then. I think what you guys, uh, would probably wanna hear is how exactly the department would would enforce it. Is is is, or maybe not, I don't know.
Yeah. How many chances we have to give to the tenants, the landlord, in order for them to be fined with something that he, they probably can play like, oh, I have never received that information and, uh, no one has stopped by, I haven't received anything, so how are you gonna play that out?
Yep. So, um, so thank you. So the the first amendment, that the Department of Public Works will create a recycling notice to be signed by the tenant and attached to the lease, I think that goes in part to that, right? So what has been discussed, I mean, again, this is a project that, um, you know, what we'd be starting, and I think that there might be certain things that, uh, they're gonna have to change a little bit, right? Depending on, um, how, uh, the public reacts. Uh, but you know, what we're looking at is, uh, a six months or or longer education phase, where people are just gonna be educated and they're gonna be, uh, given information. You know, right now, well, one of the things that I know that the Department of Public Works is working on from having conversations with them and also from being part of the original discussions with JRM, one of the reasons that I I I at least was like JRM as the new contract holler is that they said that they could, uh, put out literature to every household. So every time they're, um, picking up trash, that they can leave information on every household, so that way we're hitting them from two sides. One with the education campaign that the city's doing, but also the the holler themselves can be, uh, putting out that information. So after the 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 six months, uh, what we've sort of been discussing is having conversations with the tenant or landlord, whoever is at fault for, and whoever needs to be educated, right? So I think it's it's not just given material, there has to be conversations with the individual so that they know how it's done. You know, like, I've had conversations myself, uh, with some folks and it's, uh, you know, residents need ten or fifteen minutes to be explained how it is that you actually recycle because how we used to recycle back ten something years ago when we first started a single stream, it's not the same way that we recycle now. Before, we just said, put all the plastic and put all the paper in the bin and like, don't worry about it. Uh, because at that time, China was just taking all the plastics and all the papers, and people assumed that they were actually going out and recycling that. Uh, in the last year, China has said that they're no longer taking our recycle, so that means that we actually have to start getting better at recycling. So, uh, I think from my conversations with the recycling coordinator, the first phase is education. The second phase is, uh, and when she gets up here, she can correct me, right? If I'm wrong. The second phase is educating the people that are currently recycling, educating them on how to recycle better. And then after that, you know, you move to the folks that aren't recycling and try to increase recycling with them and do, uh, an education piece. There isn't an interest from what I've garnered from the Department of Public Works to use this as a way to obtain finances. Um, there isn't, uh, you know, you know, essentially, they they, it's a a stake that they would rather not use. Um, you know, to the point that we've even talked about, you know, within current, our current rules and regulations, the city, if you are not, um, going by the 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 rules of the, um, our ordinances, technically, we can withhold the trash and we can say, no, we're not gonna pick up your trash, we're not gonna pick up your recycling. That's what it says in the books. To this point, even the folks that are currently not recycling correctly, you know, one of the things that the department has said is, we're not, you know, like, they're they're trying to, you know, ensure that the holler comes back to pick up the recycling, unless it's completely horrible, right? Um, they're trying to come back so that the, uh, the holler picks up the recycling, uh, because at the end of the day, we wanna make sure this is picked up and they understand that this is a learning process that could take six months of longer, right? So right now, their goal is six months. It could be that they come back within six months and they say, we, you know, folks still need to be, you know, uh, uh, they need three more months or six more months of, uh, of education. Um, and then afterwards, they will focus on the, uh, to recycle, the people that are recycling to recycle better. And then the the last phase would be, uh, the other folks. But to your point, I've spoken with the director of inspectional services, uh, spoken with the director of, um, Department of Public Works, and I presented the same question. You know, I've said, okay, what if you have a tenant and, um, landlord has tried everything? Landlord has has given them the bin that was provided by the city and they still don't wanna recycle. At that point, what the, um, uh, the director of of the of inspectional service says is like, that's completely understandable. Like, he doesn't see himself giving a ticket to the landlord if the landlord's doing everything right. You know, at that point, if the the tenant is educated, um, then you potentially could give the ticket to them or you figure out another, uh, solution to the problem. Uh, again, I I believe that seeing how in other cities, there's only been, so for example, in the city of Haver, for the 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 period that they've been doing this, there were only, you know, around five instances where the city has had to find someone. I think that we're gonna be seeing something similar here, that out of the eighty thousand residents, maybe there's one or two occasions where, uh, something comes up, right? I think that this is more of, um, a tool to ensure that people understand that they can get fined if, uh, things are not done correctly.
I think at this point, um, we're just gonna, we're just gonna give the opportunity to the recycle coordinator, so that way, if we have a question, is everything is gonna be covered and we start throwing question before she starts speaking, so in that way.
That would be great.
Thank you was was clear.
Um, Madam Chair, is it possible though, uh, because regardless of what happens today, um, I I wanna make sure that this, uh, these two things get on the, get on the record. So even if we have to continue and and do whatever, um.
You mean the amendment?
The two, can we just, uh, put the two amendments into?
Yeah, but we we can do that whenever we're gonna make a decision and take a vote, so we're just gonna give the opportunity to, uh, but thank you councillor Payano, it's very good.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, councillors. My name is Lorena Salazar, recycling coordinator, Department of Public Works. Um, so, um, I'm here to present, uh, some of the positive, um, outcomes that we will have as a city if we establish mandatory recycling. So one of, um, the first things is that in order for me, eh, to get the funds that we need to buy the recycling carts for the residents, we have to have mandatory recycling in the books, and not necessarily start enforcing it right away, but by having it in the books, I will be able to immediately tap into the resources that the state has in order for me to provide the tools to residents. That's one of the important points of.
See, that is, that's why I said that you need to speak, so that way we can reserve our question for last. You may continue.
Thank you. Um, also, I have been working on on the data that we have of like tonnage and like the current numbers that we have. If we will increase, right now, the recycling rate is at eleven percent based on the tonnage. Like, if we will increase the recycling rate, eh, to eighteen percent in one year, we will be saving thirty-four thousand dollars in average, like in the first year that we're eh going in, in practice for mandatory recycling and the residents are giving the cart. Um, so, uh, the estimated savings, but also it's gonna help, um, organizing better, like the trash, people will have the option so they can like alleviate some of the overflow trash that the people has at their homes because they will have the proper container to separate their materials. Um, and very importantly, as councillor Payano was mentioning, um, there is really not a purpose as to like punish the residents for not recycling. There's something that's very important going on and is, eh, the topic in regards of contamination. Eh, that is a big thing that we have been, eh, working since last fall. We are using grant money from the state, uh, to provide information, literature as to how to properly recycle. So we are not necessarily going to be pursuing people that's not recycling per se, but for us, it's important that if somebody's giving the cart and they start using it, that those recyclables are clean. And the the holler is also passing around some information, uh, with like the compliance, how clean recycling should look like. And during the summer, we are always going to be, um, doing the recycling IQ kit, that is a grant that we have to in continue improve the recycling quality for the city. So we not only increase the recycling rate and the savings for the city, but also increase the recycling, um, quality, which is very important. Um, and I think that is what I have in case you have some questions, I'd love to answer those.
Anyone else wanna speak on the, on behalf of?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Rachel Torres and I'm a resident of Lawrence and I have been for about the past five years. Um, and I would just like to say I do support very much so this ordinance for mandatory recycling, simply because I've had the chance in the past year and a half to really do a lot of research and a lot of hands-on work in the environmental field, and it is something that is extremely necessary. And I believe that not only will this save the city quite some money in the long term and even maybe within the next couple months to a year, but it also kind of puts in mind first and foremost, or not so much first, but just more towards the the priority of everyday things, to be a little more sustainable about the way we go about our everyday lives. Um, sorry, the feedback is kinda, kinda funny, but, um, yes, it's 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 quite a problem. Um, we are facing all sorts of challenges in the world, and these are all challenges that our children are gonna be facing really soon. You know, that the human lifespan is rather quick, um, and it seems that things are getting quite dramatic from plastics that are in our ocean circulating, killing our wildlife, making the acidity of the oceans quite different in various regions, to microplastics that we are ingesting and actually almost are native nowadays. If you were to look at the fish that we consume, the plants that grow in our own bodies, you will find small traces of microplastics even now. And, um, I don't have any studies to cite for you, but these are things that you can easily find online, you can easily speak to most people who are experts in this field about. Um, it's a really big problem, the plastic problem that we have today, and I think recycling will just keep us a little more grounded to the fact that we need to be a lot more responsible about about the way things go, and I feel like Lawrence is no exception, and I would love to see the city pave the way for that kind of thing, along with the other cities that have so far done it in Massachusetts. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Susan Almano, and I'm, uh, here as a member of Grace Episcopal Church, and I just wanted to support the recycling coordinator and, uh, council member, um, and say a few words about this issue, really from a moral perspective. Um, we certainly agree as faith communities that we need to be more sustainable, and I think that, of course, we've heard about the economic benefits and how there is an education process that would have to be gone through in our community to achieve those economic benefits, but there also is that issue of sustainability and resource use that, um, you know, when we start recycling, that leads to less use of our resources in the world. And we really need to think about that at this time because, you know, the resources we use, like cardboard, like plastic, for all of these packaging materials that we use, that's frankly causing a lot of greenhouse gas contamination in the world. And as we create that, what happens is that we're having health impacts. And as I think that was already mentioned, those health impacts are disproportionate in communities such as Lawrence, so that we need to look at the ways to lessen those health health impacts from greenhouse gas emissions. And, um, you know, I think just looking back at what happened over the last year with the gas explosions and the terrible catastrophe that our communities have gone through, we did see that there was a time when the community of Lawrence was more disproportionately impacted by all of the negative things that happened after the gas explosions. And so in the same way, um, you know, the kinds of negative consequences of overuse of our resources, things like higher asthma rates, things like flooding, things like, uh, food prices going up because of, uh, drought in, uh, agricultural areas, those are things that are disproportionately, uh, found here in Lawrence and in other communities that are vulnerable such as ours. So I think that it's, it's tremendously important to take this first step to get recycling on the books, and then we can go from there in terms of developing the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay.
Hello, good evening councillor.
Hello, good evening, council. My name is Raiza Amaliska Arrasco, I go by Rae. I am an artist and resident at youth development organization and also educate on sustainability to use. I'm here today to obviously support this endeavor to get on the books for more than one reason. Not to be, want to remind, but we kind of did start as an industrial city, but with ways of using our waterways to make clean energy. I feel that it's not completely out of our capacity for our current residents of Lawrence to continue endeavors to make this place sustainable in this present time, because lacks of education, being that I do educate younger students and I see the passion that they want to continue to learn and figure out how to apply these methods, whether it's recycling plastics, using renewable energies, figuring out food scarcity and food deserts within our area. But obviously, we have to start somewhere first, so I find that providing a way to not only give residents the proper tools, such as bins, stickers, incentives, whether it's also holding the city accountable as well with different fine rates and also encouraging them with different utilities, such as the carts that are listed on the policy and other endeavors. I think that that would kind of push the city to not only be sustainable, but also catch up to what's going on at a local level with the rest of the other Massachusetts cities that are now also pursuing these endeavors, but also at a national and global level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're just gonna open the floor for all the question. Councilor, Councilor de la Cruz. Who do you wanna ask the question?
I have a suggestion. I believe in recycling and that's something that needed to be taught in the house to the kids. But I also like to see when the program start working from the school level. Is there a program that is working from the school? Is one of my question. Are the containers being providers for people? Because when they see the containers, they are more motivated to recycle. And the media has to be in English and Spanish more open to the whole community. This is not a problem for elderly. It is a problem for little kids, because they don't know, they don't know what recycling means. They don't have the passion or they don't have the understanding of recycling everything that they have in the house. And also, what we're gonna do with the churches? Because churches, they recycle, they don't have, they don't pick up their garbage or they're recycling. And the same schools. The schools are wasting a lot of papers and they are not being recycled. And a lot of big business, because they don't, because they had private company to do their garbage, they don't recycle. Then I think we have to engage so many people in the community. We have to ask the superintendent to open the door. We have to ask the mayor to open the door. We have to ask everybody to be part of the problem, because we know that we have a global issue right now. We have, like this young lady was saying that, what we're gonna do for the kids in the future if we don't do anything now? But I think we have to target the schools, because they are the majority of people. We have to provide containers for the people, because it's a motivation. I remember working with somebody at the old high school. He started a recycling program and he started giving out the blue beans. That was the motivation for my street. When everybody got a container, everybody started recycling. Then I think the media about recycling is very low. We need to, we need to, that topic should be everywhere. It should be at every church, every school, every location in the city, because it is the problem. If we wanted to have a word for the year 2050, we had to start working today. But we have to engage everybody in a way that people would like to do it, that people are learning how to do it. Somebody was saying that you have to wash every container for recycling. A lot of people, they're not going to recycle if you put a lot of, a lot of little duties that they have to do before doing that. We need people to understand that you put the plastic container in one place, that you put the cardboard in another place and that you put the papers in another place. Then I think we have to work on a very massive media propaganda for the whole community, Spanish, English, and even in French. Because we can't wait. But what bothers me from this city that is always talking about giving tickets to people for not doing what they have to do. I think education, it has to be free. We have to educate everybody and we don't have to ask or punish anybody. We have to let people understand that if we don't save the planet today, we're not gonna have a planet for our grandkids. Then let's work together, let's do the best, but at the same time, let's find solution to the problems. Thank you.
Any other, Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Good evening. So essentially, I have a few questions, which some I support and some I have some doubt. But obviously, the discussion that we have had today is everything based on what I have, what I support, which is recycling. But this ordinance is truly about recycling and trash and the disposal, which nobody have talked about it. So can we talk about that? And can we talk about the trash collections and so forth? So I know that you're recycling, but I mean, are you focusing on trash collection as well?
Yes, and if there is anything that I don't feel comfortable answering, I will make sure that the information gets to the council later, but yes, I can answer some questions.
So if we compare the ordinance related to trash collection with the previous ordinance that we haven't, that we haven't seen right now, what is the main difference between the two ordinance that we have in front of us today?
The main difference between the current ordinance that we have for trash collection in the city?
Yes, and this one that we have in front of us. Because this ordinance is about recycling and trash collection. So that is another portion that nobody have mentioned so far.
That's correct. Well, I cannot tell you the main difference between the ordinance that we currently have in place and...
Why don't we, we didn't separate those two ordinance, trash collection and recycling? Recycling is awesome. But on the trash collection portion, I have some issues.
Councilor Payano, you have the answer?
Sure, so I think that this question was asked at the last meeting, so I'll restate what Director Hakkas said. What Director Hakkas says was that there, as far as the trash, the major differences, I'm trying to recall them, were around like, you know, prohibited items and essentially a system that was antiquated, antiquated, whatever, however you say it. Antiquated, there we go.
Antiquated.
As compared to, sorry, bilingual. As compared to sort of, you know, how we're doing it now. I think is there a particular area, because I know you're very, very well versed in this, is there a particular area that you wanna, might wanna put a microscope on? So we can talk about potentially the differences between that and the current policy? I think that's one question that I have for Council Rodriguez. And the second thing is, the question that, the second question that was asked was, why putting it together? You know, if you guys see the history, what I originally proposed was something just dealing with recycling. The administration, and I understand their logic, essentially what they're saying is, you know, you can't do one without the other. Both of them are well-connected, both recycling and trash. And that's why, you know, they kinda asked for us to deal with both of these subjects, because they're under the same title.
So are we gonna be able to do anything about the bulky area, bulky materials? The bulky item collections on the city of Lawrence? Are these your new ordinance?
So, so within these new ordinances, I mean, DPW can talk more on it, there weren't any new initiatives or anything new dealing with the bulky items. That's something that they currently deal by contract. I know that with this current contract with JRM, there are a couple of things that they're, you know, taking in, but that is not what the new stuff that's with JRM is not reflected on these ordinances. They're more contractual. If the council, I think that there is some merit to leaving it that way, because that gives the administration the ability to negotiate with JRM without having to go through the bureaucracy of the council. So I think that there's merit to the way that the administration is currently doing it. But if the council wishes to do it differently, I would understand and it, you know, I probably, you know, would support that. I know that there, that there was an attempt in every discussion that we had to see if, like, what we could bring in without it costing the city, you know, too much money. I like the fact that there's some bulky items, there are some things that are being taken in and hopefully we move further in that direction.
So currently, in the current trash contract, oh, in the current trash bin we have in use, it went up in price to a hundred and four dollars each. Before it used to be sixty-five dollars. So do we have anything on this ordinance that actually talk about the issue that is gonna be for a lot of people eventually?
So I would say that's the whole purpose of the ordinance, right? So this ordinance was, you know, we've been working on this for probably a year and a half now before this contract came about. But I will say something that Director Hakkas said at the last time. Lawrence, while he was here, he said that every year we're throwing away thirty percent more trash. What we see in the market throughout the state is that both the picking up of trash and then disposing of trash is getting more and more expensive. I'm glad, Council Rodriguez, that you mentioned that right now with the current hauling contract, which I think it's a good contract. You said it was a hundred, how much was it, do you know?
A hundred and four.
So it's a hundred, it's around a hundred dollars?
A hundred and four.
And I think one of the important parts for this council to know about is that our current contract with waste management to dispose the trash, because they're only picking it up. Afterwards, they have to dispose the trash.
That's another contract.
That's another contract that we have to renew next year. Currently it's around, according to, uh...
Sixty-four dollars a ton.
Hakkas, he said it was closer to seventy. But what he said, what is that Boston just made a new contract with waste management for disposal at one-twenty-five. So if it's at one-twenty-five per ton in Boston, I can only assume that when it's come time for us to renew that contract, that we're gonna be around there as well, almost doubling our disposal cost. Within this, I think what...
Councilor, but I mean, we're talking about something different. I'm asking if this ordinance is currently talking about the current situation that we have with the trash bins, which it was sixty-five dollars before, now it's a hundred and four dollars.
So what you're saying is, okay, I got it.
You're talking the disposal.
So you're not talking about, you're saying that the cost of trash bins is sixty-five dollars? Okay, trash bins.
It used to be sixty-five, now it's one and four.
So what you're looking for is will the city provide trash bins?
Or at least is the ordinance talking about that, a specific issue that we're gonna be facing soon?
So what the ordinance provides is if the city puts funds to, to get trash bins, it provides a process on how that's done. I think, you know, if the recycling coordinator can talk about, sort of if there is a state grant, and we had a conversation around state grants regarding recycling. So you, oh, you said specifically for trash.
See, that's why, that's why I don't mean the two. I am one hundred percent with recycling and...
Council Rodriguez, it's a funding issue. Council Rodriguez, it's a funding issue. So yeah, so it's in the books that we can provide, you know, recycling bins, just like if the mayor puts a grant, puts a, asks for a loan or from free cash to provide trash bins, that doesn't need to be in the ordinance. You know, if the mayor provides the funding and the council approves, it doesn't need to be in the ordinance. I hope, you know, because I think that right now that's definitely an issue.
No, but I mean, what can be in the ordinance is something that actually addressed possible issue that we face. That is, it could be a financial issue eventually, but something on there.
Like what, Council Rodriguez?
That's why I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that both of them are separate, because we wouldn't have this discussion right now if we talk about only recycling.
You know, so, so Councilor, they're together? I think I see what you're saying. That's monetary, if we were to put something saying the city is required to give everyone trash bins or something like that, that's a monetary discussion that we would need to have with the mayor. I think that, in order for that to occur, it does not need to be of the ordinance. The mayor can just do that.
So you say that both of them, both of the trash situation, or the trash ordinance and the recycling ordinance should be together, or it's convenient to have them together?
So...
Because before we used to have only recycling.
So anyone that knows me... Thank you, Councilor. So anyone that knows me knows that I'm extremely passionate about recycling. I'm extremely passionate about the environment, right? So that being said though, I understand, at the end of the day, I'm not the mayor and I'm not the one that's doing the administration of what I'm hoping to see improve in the city. What I'm hearing, right, so that, you know, I was one-minded, like this is what I wanna do. Council president essentially said, speak with Director Hakkas, and Director Hakkas had a different approach to it. After having various conversations, I understood why he thought that that approach would be better, right? And it was coming down from the administration where you're refreshing recycling, you also need to refresh what's in the trash. You need to refresh the prohibited items. And if you see, if you really look at the changes, it's been a while since I've read through this again, right? But if you look at the changes, you're gonna see that there, the, the, most of the changes or almost all of the changes are not on the trash side, they're on the recycling side. Because that's the, what's new from this. And I've approached several times to the administration. I've asked, are you guys interested in separating both? And what I've heard back from them is that, like basically, what, the way that this makes sense is for both of them to be done. So if that's what the administration is saying...
For both to be done?
For both, for both to be amended, correct.
Okay, so I guess that we are on the right track, because both are gonna be amendment on both of the ordinance. The only, the only thing is, there is one that need more work than the other one as we have right now. So with that said, I would like to make a motion, put a motion to actually split these items into one-twenty-one A-18 and one-twenty-one B-18.
Can I ask a question, Councilor, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The problem is, is that right now, the way that this is written is it's very intertwined, right? So in order to, so I mean, I would ask, how would you split it, right? So if the committee is interested in splitting it, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, what I would hate to see is for the administration to then say, we can't move forward with the recycling project because of X, Y, Z reason, or we have to hold on, hold off to the education part, everything recycling, until the bureaucratic business of the trash part is being handled. That's, to be honest, one of my, one of my fears. So if the counselor has a way of doing that, that...
Well, right now, I'll tell you this much. The ordinance, the recycling ordinance is more than complete. So if we split it in two and send the recycling ordinance of both and have separate discussions on trash and recycling, I'm pretty sure that one of them is gonna pass, or probably both.
Before we, before we continue, you was just given some answer about his request. You say that when you met with the administration, they say one thing cannot happen before the other. So if that was the answer that was given, so meaning that if you go with only a piece of it, they probably gonna say like, no.
So Madam Chair, so I will say I'm not part of the administration. I don't know the inner workings, right? What I, what I, I repeat is, it was brought to them, they made it clear that the, that the way that this would work-
Basically the same answer, like it needs to be together, one thing cannot happen before the other.
So at the end of the day, I, I leave it in all of your capable hands as to how we should move forward with this. But I think I, you know, I've done my part to do the homework, um, that was asked of, uh, asked of us. Um, if there is something else that is required or, um, another piece of information that you're looking for, I would gladly go and, you know, and look for that, um.
Um, okay, Counselor, are you done?
No, not.
Okay, hold on, you still have the floor?
Yes, I was talking.
Yeah?
So previously, we have another ordinance here in front of us for recycling. That's exactly what I'm trying to do here. If the, if, if, I just wanna make sure about something. As a city council, we are the only one that can actually do this work of creating ordinance here in the city of Lawrence. It is not administration, sorry. It is the city council that do that, and that's the work that we have, that's why we got elected. And people can vote us out on, on November fifth, if we don't do the right thing. That's the right thing, that's democracy. So separation of power should be there, and what I'm saying, if the administration wanted to do something, they can definitely go and do it through the city council, not necessarily what they want only.
So, so what I would say, Counselor, if, if the attempt is to make that old motion, uh, that I, uh, initially presented to be the separation, the reason I would advise on that is that after discussions with, uh, Director Hakkas, that old, uh, old motion has been, um, has been drastically amended. There are, there are portions in my original vision that, uh, changed after all the different discussions that, um, and the, and the research that happened, uh, afterwards. So there would have to be a more of a, uh, piece by piece, um, process to separate, uh-
Okay, and then sell it to me. You're not selling it to me, you said, you, you telling me an idea that you're passionate about recycling, but it's still, you haven't told me, uh, so why we have to do it together? You haven't told me why, the, the administration told you. Okay, bring somebody from the administration to tell us, as, 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 as a, as a committee and as a city council, that it should be together.
So if, if you're looking for that, request it, Counselor.
Counselor De La Cruz?
Yes, um, both of them are garbage. Recycling is garbage and the garbage is garbage. I don't think they could be separated, number one, it would confuse people a lot. Number two, they are picked up the same day, then it's more easy for an inspector.
Continue, Madam, continue.
It's easier for any city inspector to inspect the garbage. Let me tell you a beautiful story. I used to live in New York, and three times they gave us ticket to the whole building, ten families. And when the inspector came out, he was taking mail from everybody and sending the ticket to the whole building. Then, I'm not talking about giving tickets to our people in this city, but what I'm saying, garbage and recycling is the same thing. And it, it will make easier for any, uh, inspector to give the ticket on the recycling day or inspect the garbage on the recycling day. That's number one. Number two, I think that, um, like I said before, we need to work together as a team to make a difference with what is affecting not only the city of Lawrence, this is global. This is, everybody is being affected for what is going on with the garbage, that we are not putting them in the right place and, and separating the recycling at the same time. Then my motion will be to, uh-
No, we, we still have to, we haven't given opportunity, uh, to Counselor Levy, and that is why I gave it the opportunity to you, so, and, uh, please, our apologies for whatever happened. We try, okay? That is not gonna look bad on us. Counselor Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here. Uh, I have a couple of questions regarding the, the item that's been submitted to us right now. Uh, the Department of Public Works will create a recycle notice to be signed by the tenant and attached into the lease. How are you, see, how are you gonna pursue this?
Uh, would you like to talk about that? Okay.
So in the, the plans that we are having, um, like for communication and education, uh, we are going to draft a document that the landlords can use as a tool. We can, uh, upload it to the DPW website, so they can print it at any time. And also, we can, and we will, mail copies, uh, with, um, water or the tax, uh, bill, you know, that. So the landlords will get a copy of the document and they make copies of it, uh, so they can, um, sit down with their tenants when they are coming into their, uh, their premises, um, so they can educate them as like how, how the disposal should be, and then that way they can keep the tenants accountable. You know, like the, the landlord will be able to use that as a tool to have that conversation, have them signed if they want and say, hey, you know, you read this document and, and it's important for you, uh, to, to follow those guidelines.
So, so one of the ways that we foresee this, so we, we've had a lot of discussions, because we, we basically met for a couple of hours, how do we protect landlords that are doing the right thing, that are informing their tenants, and the tenant just, is just not having it? So one of the things that we thought of, I mean, I, now we thought of, um, Lorena saw that Lynn is doing. So the, the pro, the program that Lynn instated was they created this recycling notice. And essentially, when they see that they're having issues with a tenant, you know, it's, it's, uh, given to the landlord. I mean, it's provided on the, on the site, so any landlord that wants to pick it up, great, but I'm gonna assume that the time that the landlords would actually use this if an issue comes up, right? So if an issue comes up and you're having a discussion, Lorena, whoever's having a discussion with, uh, the tenant, the tenant is informed and the tenant, you, you ask the tenant to, um, to sign, um, sign this notice. Um, you could also do this right at the start of the lease, I would say that's probably, uh, the best time, uh, to have this conversation. Again, I don't think that this is something that we're gonna see in use right away, but as, uh, Lawrence starts to change, right, and we start to get more educated, five, you know, years down the road, I think that this would be a program that, you know, everyone will be using to ensure that their tenants are educated. So if anything happens, right, and special services that comes in and says, your tenant is doing X, Y, Z, you can easily put this up and be like, well, the tenant knew, right? So the onus is not on me, it's on the tenant.
Everybody talk about recycle, everybody say I love recycle, uh, everybody say I like recycle, but I don't know why. We have, we have been so difficult to teach people in here to do recycle. I don't know what is the problem, that people do not understand how to recycle things in here in the city of Lawrence. Two years ago, I just went to Dominica Republic, and I went to the city, one of the city that is called Santiago. So, many of you have been, not about it. And they start the recycle program. Next year, or last year, I went back to Dominica Republic. And that, in one year, the changes that they have been done by doing recycle was tremendous. Right now, their city in Dominica Republic is the second one in the Caribbean that is doing the best recycle in the area. But why Lawrence is just only six point eight, um,
Miles.
Miles. Uh, and we are not able to do practically the same, uh, the difference. So why, what is the problem? So we need to look at something, you know, and wait, since in looking, what is the message that we have to get to the people, that people can work with us at the same time? It's like, uh, uh, the same relation in between, right? But that, that is something missing, it's a piece missing in here that doesn't fix in the city of Lawrence. Um, And right now, with the increase that we are having, I don't know if we looking for so many other company and just try to figure it out on the contra, who did the contra? But also, I just hear that the trucks that they have do not have, is, uh, uh, will not be able to use like the same trash container that we need to buy a new trash container, besides that we have to buy, uh, the recycle for, for, uh, the trash container for the recycle.
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, so the, the, the program for recycling, we have been very proactive as to how to solve that, um, issue of like, why is that in the city of Lawrence, we haven't been able to like advance in the recycling? Like in the recycling rate and the way we do recycling? So this year, for the first time in the history of the program, we accessed a resource from the state. Uh, they granted the city forty thousand dollars to do mass outreach through, uh, we have sent three mailers this year. One went through every house, um, a second one went to a target area that we were working. We also hired four temporary workers to do inspections at the curb. And I can show you the, the data, uh, soon, I'm consolidating it. But, um, from week one, when we were checking into the containers, contamination rate was around forty percent. And by week five, the contamination rate had gone, uh, down, uh, seven percent in some of the areas. So it's a program that is proved to be very effective. The city of Lynn has used it for three years in a row, and they were able to decrease the contamination rate from like around thirty percent to under, um, one digit. So it's a program that we are going to continue tap into every year and execute it. Once a year, we're going to do the recycling inspections, the feedback at the curb, um, send out the promotional materials. We have radio announcements, we have banners at the corners of the main streets. So we are doing like a consistent outreach for people. On top of that, uh, the, 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 the holler is also, uh, providing literature with the same guidelines. So we are working as a team with the trash holler, so we are giving and providing the same information and not confusing our residents. And the, you know, there is, part, part of the reasons why, um, the, the city of Lawrence presents some challenges is that there is a lot of new people coming in all the time. So we cannot send one mailer and expect that the people have received the message. We have to continue doing it, and that is the plan for the recycling program. We will continue send those, uh, promotional materials at least three times per year. We will continue the, the, the radio announcements, we are going to radio interviews. I have conducted info sessions at the senior center with Dev Inc., with the Dev. So that, 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 uh, part of like the, the, our, our residents also receive the information in the proper way. I have provided, um, workshops, uh, at different association meetings, at Lawrence Community Works. So we are doing what we can to expand and have consistent information, and that is what we will continue to do. That is also taken from other cities that have been having successful results. So we are not reinventing the wheel, um, and we are positive that we will have, uh, positive results as well.
So education, I think, is one of the priority that we should have right now. We need to continue doing, you know, in passing information to the people. But I don't, I don't think so that because people are moving in or out is the reason. There is something, there is a piece that is been missing in here that we are not capable to do the recycle on the way that it should be. We've been working on this for, I've been here almost two years, and I think, I've been hearing about, you know, recycle or doing this or doing that, but I, we don't get it to the people, okay? I'm not the person that is thinking that we have to find this, uh, the landlord or we have to find the tenant. I think so that is a piece in missing from us to there, so, or from, and they are not receiving. They are not receiving the message, you know, that's how important is to do the recycle. Maybe the company that we have was not doing, or the company that we have it was not doing the work. Or I hope that the, these people now that we hired or the new company that we contract, maybe they making a, a better job and could be better to do the recycle on the way that it's supposed to.
So, so Counselor, I mean, so very, very great point. I think that the difference now is around, it's all around resource and priority. You know, I, you know, Lorena is right next to me, so I wanna commend her for the work that she's been doing the last several months. You know, I, I tend to drive, you know, early in the morning just to see how things are going, you know, in, in, uh, in, in my neighborhood. And I'll see her nine in the morning, nine-thirty, like leaving like little pieces of, like of notes to different people. Um, and I think that's one of the things that we've been missing, you know, someone that's completely dedicated in doing this work and trying to in, uh, improve it. Uh, with this, um, passing of this, we're gonna get resources from the state. We're gonna get, uh, you know, potential resources for people to have bins. Because the other issue is that for, for some individuals, if they don't have a, a bin, they're not gonna recycle, right? And they're not gonna go and, and buy a bin. So I think that's a, a very needed resource that's, uh, that's gonna come in. Another piece that's very important is, for the first time ever, Lawrence is all, gonna create an advisory board that's gonna be, their purpose is advising DPW on trash and recycling. They're gonna be, um, they're, they're mandated to once a year present to the city council a plan. You know, how will trash and recycling look next year? With the goal that you, counselors will be pushing the, the Department of Public Works to create savings. You know, I'm on the Budget and Finance Committee. Every year, we talk about the same thing, like why is trash going up? Why does it keep going up? What are you doing for, for trash to go up? I think that this gives them a tool, and it also allows a certain level of transparency for, um, the city council and the advisory board to keep DPW and whatever administration, you know, comes in and out, um, accountable to us, uh, that they are doing the work on increasing recycling and increasing savings, uh, in this really, I think it might be even the largest expense that we do outside of, uh, the school department.
Yeah, I think that school has to be one of the first things that we should address, and you know-
I agree with Counselor De La Cruz with that.
And it start teaching our children, and I know that sometime when you teach the children, they bring that information to the house and they start telling the parents, you know, this is the way that has to be done, uh, recycle in the house, and that's one of the, and I agree with, uh, Counselor De La Cruz to, um, but I think that still is something missing, and, and I agree also that we should have a little separation, you know, between the trash and the recycle and focus a little bit on the recycle way, because if that is the way that we gonna be a better city, a, a best clean city, we should focus more on that and get that little separation. Thank you.
Uh, I think, I mean, I, I can only, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat what I said, uh, earlier. Well, but what I'll say is, um, when I looked at other cities and towns, they had updated, you know, both. I mean, it's one of the things that you look at, if you're gonna prohibit an item, you know, like let's say there's a certain chemical, there's something that, you know, can't be recyclable, you also have to say that it's also, you can't throw it away, right? So there are certain things that you touch on the recycling, you know, if, if it's not mentioned, especially some of the new things that, uh, Col, um, former Director Hakkas was mentioning. If you put it on one side of the ordinances that you can't recycle, will someone think that you can now throw it away, right? So that's, that presents a certain, um, sort of like legal hiccup that you would have to also figure out. But I think the, the, the key to this point is that this is a starting point, right? I, I think that there's a big opportunity, um, to keep working with DPW, to improve whatever it is that we're doing. We're creating a vehicle of transparency to ensure that we can continue to ask these questions. And from what I hear from, what I heard from, uh, the director of DPW and also his staff, um, the recycling coordinator, is that they're not trying to completely change the science system within one day, that they're gonna be able, they're gonna, they're trying to use all available vehicles, school, churches, radios, you know, messages, the holler, whatever, text messages, going door to door for the next six months, six to nine months, to educate people as much as possible. And I think if Lowell, Haverhill, and Lynn were able to make those changes with similar approaches, I think Lawrence can too.
Yes, no, definitely. You're done?
Yep, thank you.
Um, I think at this point, what we're gonna do, because I hate to delay the, you know, this item for such a long time. It's been sitting here for a year, two years.
Year and a half.
Year and a half. Um, I don't think it's a need, however, um, I heard very clear- Year and a half. Um, I don't think it's a need, however, um, I heard very clearly the concern about dividing two. And that was the question, the main question that I was asking to you, that if one thing needs to happen before another. So, I think a smart way, a safe way for us is just to send it with the favorable recommendation pending, because we have to send the language to the city attorney to make sure that everything is draft and worth it the way it's supposed to. And, um, if we don't have any response at the city council level meeting, we can table it there. But I don't think it's, it's a need for you to be coming and explain, because it took us a little bit more than an hour going back and forth for a very unknown topic, subject. This is nothing new for us. We all sound very passionate about this. This is not something that one side wants things and the other side wants something different. I think we are all on the same page. However, we just want to make sure that everybody's going to be safe and clear that whatever needs to happen, because I know a lot of question is going to start coming. This is the, the reason why we inviting our community that when something like that is going to happen, to get involved, because a lot of question is going to come. Who's going to provide the recycle bins? And if the city is going to be, and where are we going to be getting, because they think that's going to happen tomorrow. So, I know that we are creating a vehicle to be transporting to whatever, you know, way we want to go. But at this point, I think that is going to be the smart way movement, not to leave it down here. I'm going to, councillor, um, Payano, I'm going to leave you in charge to ask that question. Yes, you are the one is going to bring that to our next city council meeting to make sure that we all going to feel satisfied, and we're going to have all that information that we need to pass on to our community. And those two, it's not only to talking about how important, I think everybody knows that part. So, councillor Levy was pointed out, like, why is taking so long? Why did we get stuck? If we don't move, it's not going to be a way that we're going to be able to. So, something is blocking us. So, um, I think this is what we're going to do. Your amendment was?
So, so it's, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Um, it's amending eight point zero nine point zero forty F. The Department of Public Works will create a recycling notice to be signed by the tenant and attached to the lease. And, uh, adding eight point zero nine one twenty C point nine. The Department of Public Works will create a guideline around enforcement that will ensure that enforcement agents take into account the information and education tenants and landlords have received. Um, and Madam Chair, I'll say that, um, it's great that, um, this will be going to the city attorney, because everything before you has already come from the city attorney, but these two, um, pieces have not. So, I think that's, um, sending it to her would be, would be great.
So, when you say the create a recycling notice that to be signed by the tenants and attached to the lease?
So, that's, that's a not, that's something that's non-binding, right? It's not, uh, uh, enforcing the tenant to do that. But again, so the question comes up with, if I'm a landlord, right? So, I'm a landlord and my tenant is not recycling. I want to be able that if someone, it's going to be very rare that the discussion would be had with me, because ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, especially with Lawrence residents, when they're not recycling correctly, I've done it, right? Because I've seen sometimes somebody, a neighbor, or somebody put a lot of bags in the bins, and they're not supposed to do bags. So, I have a conversation, and I say, um, sir, you're not supposed to put, you know, put bags here. Here's why. Explain to him, take ten minutes. Problem resolved. So, ninety-nine, ninety-nine point nine percent of time, once a conversation is had and the education piece is done, the problem is, uh, will be resolved. In that off, off case that the tenant, for whatever reason, is like, nope, I want to continue putting plastic bags in the recycling bin. Like, I don't care what you say.
Who's going to be responsible for that if they don't want to do?
Exactly. So, what the, the, the conversation between the agent, right? So, uh, inspectional services, I've already said that, uh, with this topic, they're going to be more, um, I don't know what the word is, but they're going to be sort of like looking into this more. Um, conversation with the landlord and with the tenant. If the landlord already has this piece, this, the document that came before the lease, saying that the tenant already knew the information about recycling, then the, uh, the agent, the enforcement agent, Lorena, right? Will only be having that discussion with the tenant, because the tenant was already informed. If this piece wasn't signed, then all that means is that a further conversation needs to be had. Now, one of the things that I've, have made clear, both the former and the current, uh, director and the recycling coordinator, is that I'm not a, while I'm a believer, believer that you need to have incentives and you need to have penalties, I do not believe that we need to, that, you know, that you can just like squish somebody with, with fees. I think the only way that this can work is with the threat of fees and the threat that you might not get recycled, not actually following through, um, following through with that. Um, as Lorena mentioned, in other cities, they barely had issues. I really believe Lawrence is going to be one of them.
I know that, but like I said, if the tenant refuses not to.
The landlord.
Is going to take the re.
It's not going to work. So, every conversation I've had, and I think if, if you want to, um, you know, uh, at the city council level, bring up, uh, the director of inspectional services to, uh, ask him that question or ask him, you know, call him up and ask him. So, what is, has been mentioned, what he has told me is that the current project.
It's not, it's not then. What I need councillor De La Cruz, hold on, um, I will give you the flow in a, in a minute. So, the piece of the Department of the Public Works will create a recycling notice to be signed by the tenant and attached to the lease. That's the part I want to know from you.
If the landlord doesn't do that, what happens?
You are the one is requesting the amendment. I need to know from you, where are we stand, standing by with this? If the tenant refused not to recycling, who's going to take responsibility of that tenant?
So, uh, so that, that part is non-binding. So, let's say the tenant doesn't sign that, right?
Right.
Right? And the tenant, uh, doesn't want to recycle, okay?
As a landlord, we can give it that options, like you either can sign it or not.
Correct, right? So, if the tenant doesn't want to do that, from the get-go, my advice to DPW was, we have eighty thousand something people. At the end of the day, the purpose of, um, of the DPW right now is to get us to recycle well, right? So, that, and so that means that you're slow, you're, you're improving the current recycle, recycle base and slowly building in. So, by the time that we get to those rule breakers that for no reason, they want to recycle, we're, we're talking about that we're going to be several years down the road. But once we get to those, DPW and inspectional services are going to be having conversations to ensure that the tenant was informed of everything. And if that, the case is that the tenant just doesn't want to do it, the landlord, I've been promised, is not going to be fined.
That's clear. Councillor De La Cruz?
Uh, I want to go back to what councillor, um, Levy was saying. She said that something needed to be put in place that motivate people or tell people what to do. I think as the landlord level, it's going to be hard to obligate people to do it. But as inspectional service, in that package that they given to inspect the apartment, from there, I could have more power of saying, um, that are, more than the landlord, the inspectional service will have the power to say, you inspected this apartment, these are the rules and regulations, and then you start making the changes. Because if I'm a landlord, I'm not going to bother with my, with my tenants to tell them what to do, and they will not reply. But inspectional service can tell people, listen, when you rented the apartment, when we inspected the apartment, you have that in your package. I think it will work better.
Okay. So, I think at this point, we're just going to make a motion with the amendment?
A motion to send it to full council with amendment?
With the amendment to order a public hearing.
A public hearing.
Pending the documentation, the councillor Payano is going to bring it to us to the meeting to make sure that everybody's going to be clear and everybody's going to be on the same page.
Madam Chair, can you be specific about the question that I'm asking the administration to answer?
So, the question will be that what I heard the concern was that, let me finish with the motion, and then I'm going to go back with the, with the, with the question. So, the motion with the amendment pending that documentation to order a public hearing. Can I, can I hear a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, the question to you is that you're going to bring to the table, and you're going to ask, if at the city council level, we decided to divide it in two, what is going to happen with the recycle piece? If that can happen, one can happen without the other, or they have to merge it together? Okay? So, I make sure that you bring that, because I'm going to ask that question. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And also regarding the first one, we want to be, uh?
The motion has already made, so we can't change anything.
Okay.
So, if you want to do something, it's already ordered. So, if you want to talk to him and say, and?
Councillor, afterwards, if there's something else that you want to?
It's just a clarification of what you asked him first, or what, what we've been asking regarding fine, lawsuit. Either the tenant agrees, uh, sign or no, you know, although we provide it, we give the information, we want to make sure that the landlord will not be responsible for anything.
He just said it that, but, um, um, we can, we just passed the motion. We can now be continue talking about the same item. Thank you, and, uh?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
See you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, the next. Okay. So, the next, uh, document is two ninety-nine parking in front of school, two, three hours. Can I get a motion to send document two ninety-nine to offices, Cal? Yes.
That's me.
That's, um, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you. Uh, no parking in front of schools, two, three hours.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, uh, good evening. Thank you. My name is, uh, Hans Kim. I'm also known as, uh, Master Hans. I own a business. My business is U.S. Taekwondo Academy. Uh, we've been in business for about four, close to five years. And, uh, we provide not only martial arts, taekwondo, Korean martial art. Uh, we also provide, uh, before-school and after-school programs, which means that we, uh, we drive the students to school in the morning, and also we pick them up from school so that they can come to my program, our program. Now, the issue here is that, um, by law, the kids cannot stay inside the van for over forty-five minutes. But sometimes, we go over forty minutes. And the reason being is because there's so much traffic in Lawrence. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if, I'm sure you're familiar with, uh, I'm, I'm going to use Hampshire Street as an example. One ninety Hampshire Street is a charter school, and, um, all the kids, uh, there are cars parked in front of the school that don't belong to the school, so they're not teachers, they're just resident parking. Now, that's causing a lot of traffic for the school buses, like myself, parents, and also other, uh, civilians who are just stuck there for, in one block for over twenty minutes. So, now that's causing delays for not just my program, the kids to come to my program, but others' bus services as well. Now, with the traffic that's been going on, um, we get complaints from the schools. We get complaints from parents. We get complaints from pretty much everybody. But now, we're the bad, we're the bad person, we're the bad people, because we're the ones that pick them up and drop them off late. So, um, I think to, to, I believe that to fix this issue is, is to fix the street signs, uh, in front of the, of the schools. Uh, for example, I, I grew up in New York as well. I, I heard you grew up in New York. And, and the New York, uh, public school system, I also go to New York and teach, uh, taekwondo inside the public school system. And what they do is they, they close up the front, the side, and the back all around the school, uh, from six AM to six PM. I'm sorry, six AM, yes, six AM to six PM. So, that parking area should be prioritized to the teachers, not to the residents. I mean, nothing against the residents, but the teachers, why? Because they come from far away. Some come from, you know, the Bronx, some come from the Long Island, some come from all different places, and they get priority to park there so that get there in time and teach the students. And, and I think that works really well, because there is a tollways, uh, zone sign that says if you park here, you're going to get towed. And in New York City, if you get towed, you have to pay for your ticket, which is three hundred something dollars. Then you have to pay for, uh, your towing, uh, ticket, which is another three hundred dollars. So, you're spending at least six hundred dollars to get your car back. Now, once that happens, I will never park there again, you know? And, and all the street signs in New York City, it's, it's complicated to, to read, but it makes sense. And, um, I'm asking you, uh, in front of you councillors, that if we can change the signs to perhaps not all six AM to six PM, maybe three to six PM, three PM to six PM, that's where the rush hour is at, then maybe, you know, we can make a healthier, uh, community in Lawrence. And, um, I'm asking you for your opinion.
Okay. I have a question. So, no parking in front of schools, you're talking about all the schools?
I'm talking about all the schools.
So, um, for two, three, two, three hours, so we have to give a specific time. Like, if it's three to six, like you say, rush hour, I think that would make, make sense.
Right.
Um, because we have to give it like Monday through Friday, because Saturday and Sunday is not school. And if there's any something going on, it's going to be only like a program, and it's not going to whole, it's not going to be the whole entitled school.
Right, just the school, just the school.
So, I think what we're going to do is no parking in front of schools from three to six PM, Monday through Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
Maria, you got that? So, any question councillor? Because this is very simple. I think, you know, this is very fair. So, the motion will be to send it to offices, Cal, no parking in front of, and not on the schools from three through six PM, Monday through Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to send it to offices, Cal.
Okay.
So, move? Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion to table document two ninety-nine dash nineteen.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. King, what is just going to happen now is we're going to send this to the police station, and that's going to take a good, take like, a month?
All I have is time.
And then whenever we, we, he send the recommendation, we send it to the full council and order a public hearing for another two weeks. So, we have to say like, almost three months?
Whatever it takes, whatever it takes. I think this is going to beneficial, not only for the children, um, but also for Lawrence City, because, um, people that don't abide by, by the law, they will have to pay for it. And the city will make, I wouldn't say a large sum amount, but something to, to work with as well. So, um, I think, um, most importantly is, is, is the future of our children. And if, if they're not able to get into their after-school program to do homework or to wherever they have to get, then, uh, parents are wasting money, because they're not coming there on time. Um, we're not able to teach them the whole, uh, full program that they deserve to be taught, because there are inconsiderate people that want to block everything. So?
So, uh, so if you want to be notified?
Yes, ma'am.
When the, um, item come back, you can leave the phone number with Maria. She can take it. And our secretary is going to give you a call, so that way you can be present whenever we, we get the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am.
Or we can let you know.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you for, uh?
I would like to give you an information. There is, um?
When we pass an item, we can continue talking, and we just be?
I have to give an information.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, document, can I take document three oh four dash nineteen out of order? And I'm sorry? Document three oh four dash nineteen is a water commissioner ordinance update, section two point six, four point two forty. Uh, it has been put in there by Mayor Rivera, um, Commissioner. I'm so sorry that we make you wait that long today.
No worries.
It gets out of, it got out, out of our hands.
Understand completely. So, um, this?
So, um, this item here in front of you today is a simple addition to the, uh, ordinance to position, or job description for the water commissioner. Um, in your records, you should see the, the, um, edit that we're proposing. And it is simply to add the, the words, "Serve as member of the Greater Lawrence Sanitary District Board of Commissioners" to the job description for water commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Uh, so, a, a couple of weeks ago, we had presented in front of the Personnel Committee to appoint, uh, the current incumbent water commissioner, Malaport Puello, as a member of the board.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're hoping to do is, rather than have to come in front of the council every single time we have a new water commissioner, um, not that we're expecting to have anymore, uh, but rather than every time we have a new water commissioner, have to come in front of the, the council to reappoint them to the, the board, uh, GLSD board, that rather it will be, um, inscribed within their job duties. So by virtue of the position, just by being water commissioner, they're automatically on the board.
I like that.
And currently, that exists right now in the DPW director, uh, job description, so we're just listening to it.
So this is gonna be for the city engineer?
Uh, no, for the water commissioner.
For the water? Okay. Um, I have no objections, so I think this is very clear, very simple, so sometime I just feel like, yes. Um, I don't...
Send to the full council?
With the favorable recommendation? I think we need to order public hearing for that, since we're gonna be changing.
Yes, we have to order a public hearing.
So we're just gonna order a public hearing, because this is gonna be a change.
Okay.
Okay? So the motion is to send document three oh four to order a public hearing with the favorable recommendation? So, can I hear a second?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, and I'm so sorry that we keep you so long.
No worries, thank you.
We're going back to the agenda. So the next document is, um, three hundred dash nineteen, resolution in recognition of water legend that sleep, baseball team, two thousand and nineteen, state champion, Council of Duke. Can I get a motion to send it with the favorable recommendation to...
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document three oh five dash nineteen is the school in centers, three, four-way stop, has been put in agenda by Mayor Rivera. Can I get a motion to send it to offices, Callan?
Motion to send it to offices, Callan?
So move?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Document, can I get a motion to table document three oh five?
Motion to table?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm gonna be taking six item, I believe, in the block. Can I get a motion to take document two seventy-one, two seventy-six, two eighty-six, two forty-four, two fifty-four, two twenty-two, two thirty-eight, and two oh one as a block and out of table?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I'm gonna be reading, uh, if he approve it or not, and you just make sure that you second the motion. You made the motion a second. Document two seventy-one dash nineteen is a zoning, loading zone parking between twelve PM through, through three PM, Nuestro Diamante, one ninety-eight, Lawrence Street. And his recommendation is, this is a request for a loading zone at one ninety-eight Lawrence Street. This location is between the contractor pay, pay parking zone. A loading zone will eliminate two pay parking spot in the area. This document should be sent to the city attorney for a review. So can I get a motion to send document two seventy-one to the city attorney for a study review?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to table document two seventy, two seventy-one?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is, uh, document two seventy-six is a handicap parking fifty-one, fifty-one cross street. And his recommendation is, this is a request, the handicap parking, it should be placed, he approve it. Can I get a motion to send document two seventy-six to order a public hearing? To send it with favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two eighty-six is also handicap parking at seventy, seventeen, Margin Street. And he recommended should be placed... Can I get a motion to send with favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
Motion to send it to, to public hearing? With favorable recommendation?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two fifty-two forty-four is a handicap parking at sixty-six Melton Street. And this is a request, handicap parking, this parking should be placed at the following location, he recommended, so can I get a motion to send to, with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
Motion to send to...
Just second? All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two fifty-four, uh, is a van accessible parking, eleven Broadway Street. And this request, handicap parking, wait, two fifty-four is a van accessible, which is handicap parking. Should be placed, okay, he recommended. So can I get a motion to send it with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two twenty-two is a no parking at any time at two sixty-seven Prosper Street. And this is a request for no parking at any time at two sixty-seven Prosper Street. This location is a business in the space of the street and the entrance of, to the parking lot. An order does, do not need to be created to prohibit a vehicle from blocking a driveway or parking lot enforcement. Of this violation is under law municipal. So, um, we can send it with favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, because it should be a common sense, but, um, sometimes...
Maybe a refreshment that people have no block or driveway?
So move?
No, but it's no parking.
No parking.
In front of, okay, so the motion has been made?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document two thirty-eight is a handicap parking at one ten, three month street. And the parking should be placed at the following location, he recommended. Can I get a motion to send it with, to the full council with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Last but not least is the two oh one handicap parking at eight Bottle Street. And he, the parking should be placed at the following location, he recommended, so we can send it with the favorable recommendation to order a public hearing?
So move?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any table item that you wish to take it out of table? I hear, no, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.